Good evening. I am Marcia Marins and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Chautauqua County. And I am moderator for this evening's Meet the Candidate Forum. First, a brief word about the League. The purpose of the League of Women Voters is to promote active participation in government. And one of the ways we do that is by educating voters and then you can vote smart. So your vote is how you participate in your government. The League is nonpartisan. The League does not support any candidate or political party. And this has been our policy for over 100 years. Membership is open to anyone who is eligible to register and vote, whether male or female. So please consider joining the League of Women Voters. Throughout its history, the League of Women Voters has been providing opportunities for candidates seeking public office to take their case directly to voters. League Candidates Night are an expected part of political campaigns for every level of public office, I should say, except U.S. presidency. League Candidates Nights are controlled by the League and not by the candidates. Organizing a virtual debate is a relatively new and exciting opportunity for the League. Those of you out there or on the dais now who have attended our in-person debates will recognize a familiar format which we can now extend on YouTube to many more viewers than we could accommodate in a physical space. And we're very pleased that candidates have been eager to join us in this venture. So as you watch and listen to this debate, pay attention to how the candidates answer the question. Are they specific? Are they knowledgeable? Are the candidates being asked about your priority issues? And afterwards, and more importantly, talk about the debate with your friends and families. Did the debate answer your questions, sway your decisions? Did you learn something new about the candidates' positions? But most importantly, vote on November 2nd. And it is your best opportunity to make your voice heard and help shape the issues that affect all of us in Chautauqua County. If any portion of this Meet the Candidates Night is redistributed out of context, we will alert the media and file appropriate complaints with any applicable governing authority. And this recording will be on YouTube. With us this evening are the Democratic candidates for Jamestown City Council. Republican candidates have declined. With us are Alyssa Porter, Ellen DiTanto, and Christina Cardinelli. It's a debate. We, like a referee, enforce the rules and the time and simply stay out of the way. Our timekeeping there is there on the screen. And keep an eye on the time because I will, or I will try to. We have not given these candidates questions in advance, except the first one. And they will respond unscripted. Each reply will be limited to one minute. Candidates will be able to rebut or challenge one another, limited to 30 seconds. And there will be no counter rebuttals. There will be one minute for closing statements. The order of their responses, first response, were drawn by lottery prior to this meeting and will be the same order at closing. Your statement should describe your qualifications for the office and respond to the following questions. What do you consider the most pressing issue facing the city of Jamestown? And what would you do to address and resolve this issue if elected? We will begin with Ms. Porter.
Thank you. My qualifications include a professional background in recreation that spans the nonprofit sector to municipal rec, the arts, and youth programming. Rather than read my resume, I want to prioritize my opening time to talk about how I would approach addressing decreasing population size. I view this as one of the most pressing issues facing our city because it leads to a smaller tax base and thus less funding to reinvest in the community. Addressing this issue will require us to take an innovative approach to attracting and retaining new businesses and community members. We have to be willing to capitalize on opportunities for growth, like what we are seeing with the decriminalization of cannabis and progress in the green energy sector. We have to become a remote friendly work destination and make necessary improvements to our digital infrastructure. And we must address outdated zoning codes and ordinances that become a hindrance to progress. Most importantly, while tourism is one important aspect of our economic base, we must prioritize our residents and make decisions that place the needs of our neighbors at the forefront of all conversations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cardinelli.
Hi there. Thank you so much for having me. Alyssa, that was wonderful. I'm always a supporter of yours, even if it is a debate. And I am very excited to be here. My name is Christina Cardinelli. I'm very excited to tell you about why I want to run for city council. And it actually does relate to my previous experience being a restaurant worker. I've spent some of my professional career being a creative director and a sales and marketing manager and having a higher echelon job. But that is not why I am capable of being on Jamestown City Council. I am capable of being on Jamestown City Council because I am in fact a restaurant worker. I am always amazed by the parallels between restaurant work and being on council. When you are a restaurant worker, it is your job to serve. That is your entire goal of the night. You are responsible for the people that come in. You are responsible for their happiness. You are responsible to communicate, take care of them, see what they need, fulfill their every women desire truly, and to truly be of service. So when we talk about why do you want to be... Oh, thank you very much.
I barely see it myself sometimes, so it's okay. Ms. DiTanto.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the Jamestown residents who are watching today. I am Ellen DiTanto, and I am running for city council at large because I believe that together we can build a better Jamestown. I have been a property owner, taxpayer in Jamestown for almost 40 years. I have experience in county government, higher education, small business, and the not-for-profit leadership area. I have built and executed multimillion-dollar budgets. And I've worked on collaborative efforts between local governments and the private sector. And specifically, I worked on building fiber connections to service county and city government operations. That is a critical issue for the city of Jamestown. The city has suffered from a lack of substantial economic growth in recent years, leading to a need for more public services, greater pressure on our public safety system, higher crime rates, and no increase in our tax base. This is the biggest issue for us, and it represents our biggest challenge. We have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to change the course of our city. Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. We will now open our meeting to a question and answer format. The time people will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. Remember, rebuttals are limited to 30 seconds as well. Our next question is, and these were taken online and by phone. What can the city do to continue combating COVID-19? We'll begin with Ms. Porter.
Thank you. I think this is a critically important issue for our city. And one of the most effective ways that I think that we can combat COVID-19 is through a robust communication and public education program and support. I think it's important that people have up-to-date information regarding our current risk factors, how many cases are impacting our city and our community, and what the potential for spread is in our community as well. As somebody who works with kids, it is critically important to me, I see it on a daily basis, that we're protecting those who are most vulnerable. And right now, that is making sure that our young people are protected. That means we need to be continuing to advocate that people get their vaccines, wear masks, social distance, especially as we're coming up on winter months where we're not going to be able to spend as much time outside and all of those types of things. With all of that said, I think we also need to be prioritizing how we are addressing mental health concerns during this time.
Thank you very much. Ms. DiTanto.
Thank you. I agree with much of what Alyssa has said. I think we also need to step in right away on looking at broadband improvements because at any point, we are going to face possibly the need to do remote learning again. Students in Jamestown school systems were very much at risk when we had to go to either hybrid or remote learning before, in the first couple of waves here. And I am worried about that as we move into the winter months. Mental health has been a serious issue. I work with college-age students in Jamestown, and I can tell you that students moving from high school to college have had severe issues. I again believe collaboration with our mental health partners, public, private, and those that are working in our community, we need to work harder on that. And I think communication is also critical. We have found that many people, despite communications on radio and in the print media, have not gotten their vaccines. We need to work again with our private partners to make sure that we get the message out, that we make it as easy as possible. I believe we need to collaborate. Sorry.
No, you... And here's your word.
Well, I just, I think we need to collaborate with carts, for instance, on making sure that people can get to a bus and get to the vaccine site.
Thank you. Christina, Ms. Cardinelli.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna do my best to not get cut off this time. So the first part of this, I've talked about this before. I want to propose and launch a public education program, very much like what Alyssa had said. Our city council currently, as it is, we have no social media presence. We have no newsletters. We have no outreach. We have no town halls. We really don't communicate with our constituents a lot in terms of constituent-to-council person. I would like to completely reinvigorate that and increase communication. So it is something that is very easy to come by. If there are new announcements, residents can easily just log on and see what's going on. I will absolutely also agree with Ellen. When it comes to infrastructure, we have no public transportation other than carts. I have been pushing this for my entire life. I want a bus. I want a bus for the city of Jamestown. I think that would really help people go where they need to go without having to rely on carts or an Uber or taxis. Taxis are awful expensive. So if we can update our infrastructure in terms of public transportation and also just available information online, I think we can really start to assist people.
Thank you very much. Our next question is, what are your own thoughts on what the city needs to do to make changes to address racism and inequality? And with that, another question, do you favor more police or more social programs? We'll begin with Ms. DiTanto.
I believe that we need to address racism head-on. I have been pleased to see the efforts of the YWCA, the Coalition, the Justice Coalition, and other groups that have moved this to the forefront in the city of Jamestown. What do we need to do? We need to invigorate our youth to understand what is happening in our city and in our country that is causing this polarization and the increase in racism. The school system has a lot to do with that. We can work with the schools. We can work with the after-school programs. In terms of our policing, I am pleased to see our community policing is back on the agenda. We have a police chief now who has been working very closely with our community policing partners. And I think that that will go a long way as we hire more Hispanic and blacks. We need to do that in an important way to show that we believe that racism has no place here.
Thank you. Ms. Cardinelli.
Thank you so much. First, I would like to say that as a city, we need to embrace culture. We need to celebrate diversity. We need to welcome people that maybe don't look quite like us. We need to sit next to them, and we need to talk with them. And we need to experience things as they experience them. I think we have a 9% Hispanic population, and the disconnect has never been heavier. I've never seen such a disconnect between a city and a population. They feel alienated. Hispanic people feel alienated. How terrible is that to hear from residents? The black community, for example, they have Juneteenth. And Jamestown does nothing to facilitate that. They don't organize Juneteenth. They don't get involved. Regina Brackman and, rest in peace, Vicky James, were in charge of celebrating Juneteenth. And they did that all of themselves. And the city of Jamestown should be facilitating some of this, funding some of this, assisting some of this. Because when you have a disconnect, you have residents that don't feel like that this is their home.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Porter.
I want to recognize first that I'm answering this question as a white woman. And I think it's very important to identify the privilege that I have to be able to answer this question with very little risk to my own personal safety and security. And I think that's an important thing for our entire city to do. I think that it is important that we recognize our differences so that we can be able to begin to build those bridges and understand that as we are looking for advancement in initiatives that are aiming for inclusion and accessibility and equality, that means that sometimes we're going to have to have uncomfortable conversations about what it's actually like to be a BIPOC person here in Jamestown. That also means that we need to give intentional platforms and opportunities to be able to hear from members of those communities. We need to do a better job about reaching out into those communities with languages that they speak, with interpreters, and with people who are advocates for those communities already. I admire the work that Christina has already done in this area. And I think that there's a lot we can learn in the way that she has been able to really support community initiatives, like with the recent car show that was hosted in Bergman Park.
We're having a technological problem, so stop.
It seemed like a long minute, so...
I'm sorry. I apologize.
We're all doing our best.
Well, we might have to continue anyhow. I think... Does anybody on the League team have a way to time? All right, I'm gonna put up a timer.
Jack will just say 30 seconds.
Okay.
I don't know what happened here. Sorry.
Okay. Next question. We're up to that. At least, I know that. The city has a deadline of December 31st to opt out of allowing marijuana dispensaries and consumption sites. If elected, how would you vote on this issue and why? We'll begin with Ms. Cardinelli.
I apologize. Is the question how I would vote on opting out?
The city has a deadline of December 31st to opt out of allowing marijuana dispensaries and consumption sites. If elected, how would you vote on this issue and why?
Well, I will tell you right now, I am not opting out the city of Jamestown for the cannabis industry. I think the cannabis industry is a gem that we can embrace. And the cannabis industry is only as limited or as limitless as we will make it. We should sell it. We should embrace businesses. We should help small businesses establish themselves. This is truly an opportunity for revenue. And we would not be making very smart business decisions to decline that opportunity. I'm for cannabis. I will support cannabis. I will support small business owners. Thumbs up.
Thank you. Ms. Porter.
You know, I have to say, my answer is as straightforward as Christina's. It would be a ridiculous choice, in my opinion, for the city of Jamestown to opt out of this opportunity for economic growth. I've talked to business owners who are currently in our city who would love to be able to see increased revenue that this new industry brings. If we are in a situation where we are limited on our economic growth, it doesn't make sense to not look to this innovative field. We can't criminalize private use. So we are literally, if we were to opt out, only hurting our potential for economic growth.
Thank you. Ms. DiTanto.
I think that it's too premature to say how anyone would vote on this. The state has not given us any regulations, but I think it's bigger than small business. This is a huge revenue producer and could be for the city of Jamestown. Alls we have to do is look at Buffalo. South Buffalo has just landed a $200 million marijuana production facility that's going to have a number of jobs, both in construction and in the production. Erie, Pennsylvania, has 60 jobs now in Odyssey, which is a marijuana production company. We need to look at what others are doing and understand that our only tax-based growth is to have new economic development. And this is an opportunity that we cannot pass up for the revenue generation and the increase in our tax base.
Thank you very much. Our next question is, what should the city do to keep rental costs of units currently existing in the city down? We'll begin with Ms. Porter.
I think we have to begin by creating systems and ordinances that actually hold our landlords accountable. The, you know, I'm a property owner, and I have been since moving to Jamestown. So I haven't been able to experience this personally. But one of the things that really made our decision for deciding to buy in the city was the stories that we were hearing about the way that our residents who rent were treated by their landlords, including increasing the monthly payments and not taking care of their units, and just a number of egregious conditions that people were living in. I think that the city has a real responsibility to enforce and to oversee the way that landlords are treating our residents, especially when so many of those landlords don't actually live here and have a personal investment in the city.
Thank you. Ms. DiTanto.
It is unfortunate that over 30% of our multi-tenant units are owned by disinterested parties. That means people who do not live in the city of Jamestown. That number is increasing, as we have seen, because with housing prices going up and people being able to buy, they've made many of our beautiful homes into multi-tenant units. I agree with Alyssa. We need to look at our code enforcement. We need to try to make sure that we are able to enforce. One of the big issues in Jamestown has been a lack of code enforcement because we don't have the personnel available to do it. I do think that in terms of, we don't want to set rental rates. That is clearly a private sector opportunity. But we need to make sure that rental units are improved and inlivable. I go to work every day along East Second Street, and it hurts me to see some of the units that are there that people are living in. And I see that in other parts of the city as I've walked the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cardinelli.
Thank you. Part of my response is actually going to be a little bit of a rebuttal to Ms. DiTanto. I apologize. I respect you. I promise. We actually have three code enforcers. I just got off the phone recently with our Director of Development. We have four code enforcers currently. One had retired. They replaced the staff entirely. Two are currently training. And now we do in fact have four. They absolutely need capacity, and they need funding. And that relates back to the city's budget. Things need to be reallocated so our Director of Development can actually do her job and help code enforcement do its job. Additionally, code enforcement right now can't cite anyone for anything. It has to go through a court process. It has to be evaluated by a judge. And there are things city council can absolutely do to help code enforcement actually be able to ticket people and to cite people. For example, hi grass.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I just want to be able to rebut that if I could, Marcia. I have been a member of the zoning board for 20 years. I have worked with the Department of Development. I can assure you that their staffing has not been adequate to handle code enforcement in the city of Jamestown. The lack of being able to go to court is because of COVID, and we know that. But we still have not been able to hold landlords accountable for years. This isn't a new issue. And it means that we need to get more personnel on the street, and they have to be trained. I agree with Christina. We needed new people, and we've gotten them trained. So that's a good step in the right direction.
Thank you. Our next question. How would you address the concerns about the health of Chautauqua Lake? And we will begin with Ms. DiTanto.
Chautauqua Lake is a gem. And having the riverfront and being able to connect the Chatacoin and bad partnership which is developing is very important. The health of Chautauqua Lake affects all of us. Can we fix it? We can't do it alone. We need to partner. There have been a number of partnerships that have developed. And I'm glad to see that our foundations have put a lot of money into this. We have scientists that are working on this from all over the state. I believe that we will be able to partner with them. And I see that things are brightening, especially at the riverfront. When I look and see that we've been able to have the Chautauqua Bell there, that we now have a plan to have boats coming down all the way to the Warner Dam, that we will be able to not only participate in saving Chautauqua Lake, but be a part of the revenue generation that will help the city of Jamestown.
Thank you. Ms. Cardinelli.
Well, restoring the health of Chautauqua Lake, I would say, is actually more of a state position as opposed to Jamestown City Council. But I think there are initiatives that we can tackle that would help. Run-off, for example. Run-off depending on what is going into your yard, considering like fertilizers and waste. Run-off from your garbage cans. Run-off from whatever you're spraying on your lawn. Run-off comes from every single neighborhood, goes into our streets, and immediately drains into our lake. And that is actually one of the main factors that contributes to our algae blooms and our phosphorus content. So I think maybe we could have a talk with everyone in Jamestown. And, you know, what are you putting into your lawn that is then ending up into our water system? But it can be a clean approach, and it can be a very easy conversation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Porter.
Thank you. From a recreation perspective, there are few resources more valuable than a body of water like Chautauqua Lake. It is extremely important to our region. And I think that we have a tremendous responsibility in the city of Jamestown to consider how, like Christina said, the lawn care and other maintenance that we're doing as residents impacts our lake. I think the city can play a very important role in that, in providing education around how to implement greener practices when it comes to lawn care.
30 seconds.
I also think it's important that we consider what part our businesses play in this as well. Because a family produces a very small environmental impact compared to our larger businesses. And we really need to consider what sort of outdated codes they are following at this point that need to be updated and be enforced.
Thank you very much. We'll continue with another question. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making processes in Jamestown? We'll begin with Ms. Cardinelli.
Thank you so much. That's a great question. Because as of right now, I'm just gonna go on record to say that our... The conversation, the communication that we have with constituents and residents along with city council, it leaves a lot to be desired. There is not a whole lot of communication, and I would like to improve that. I think that as council members, sometimes it's very pricey, but we should move to referendum on some of these resolutions that we come up with. And when you referendum, you take public input of, did we vote for this the right way? And let the city vote. That never happens. I would like to see town halls. Earlier, I was talking about, I would like to see newsletters. And I would like to see email updates and encouraging feedback. And in general, I would like to put more emphasis on, you live here. You live in the city of Jamestown. How does this make you feel? And be open to that conversation as opposed to, we are city council as it is right now, and we make all these decisions. That's not representation. That's ruling. And I would like to move us back to true representation and open communication and being there for our residents.
Thank you. Ms. Porter.
You know, I am not going to rebut anything that Christina said. I agree wholeheartedly, which doesn't make this a very exciting debate. But I do think that we need more town halls. We need to lean into technology. We need to be using social media to be able to connect with our residents. And we need to be creating a two-way street for communication as well. We could be doing a lot more with online surveys, which we've seen have come out a little bit with our recent mayor. But we could definitely be doing a lot more of that. I also think it's important to recognize that technology doesn't work for everyone. So we don't want to lose sight of the importance of those in-person conversations as well. And as we're scheduling those, making sure that they're accessible for people who don't have typical work hours or have mobility challenges or language barriers, all of those types of things that get in... or have mobility challenges or language barriers, all of those types of things that get in the way of allowing people to engage in civil dialogue.
Thank you. Ms. DeTanto.
I, I can't disagree with anything that's been said. Town hall meetings are critically important. Online surveys are a must. But I'll tell you, I was at a budget hearing for the city of Jamestown yesterday and there were two members of the public and me. And I understand it was on Zoom. It was in a room that was not at all comfortable to invite the public into. And it was not very public. It, it really wasn't. Things were not well, uh, publicized in advance. I couldn't find the Zoom link just hours before. So we need to make some improvements. That is the one time in the year that our public has an opportunity to voice their opinions. This year is critically important with $28 million on the table in addition to our $33 million budget. So we need to improve all of this. And I think off-hours is very important. We can't expect people to always be nine to five and be able to have their comments uh, during that period. So we, we need to make sure that we're, uh, inviting in the public in many different ways. Social media has made it a lot easier. We have seen a lot of comments from people who might not come to a public meeting, but they feel free to do that on social media.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Our next question. If you feel the arts are an economic or the arts is an economic driver, what can the city of Jamestown do to promote the arts? And we'll begin with Ms. Porter.
I definitely think that the arts are invaluable to any community. As a dabbling writer and actress married to a production manager, I have personal interest in this area. I think that, um, the city can revitalize our, our venues that had to, to close for, um, be due to COVID. I think that we can do a better job at supporting community events that be, can become a host for more artists and special guests, music guests, musical guests, all of those types of art forms. Um, it is disheartening to me when I see conversations and hear conversations in our community about how the, the city doesn't support our own residents. And I think in hosting and supporting community events and arts events and initiatives as a critical uh, um, critical priority for the city of Jamestown is a way to begin to address that.
Thank you very much. Ms. DeTanto.
Thank you. As a member of the Reglone Center for the Arts Board, I can tell you it is critically important to have cultural, uh, activities and arts in the center of Jamestown. Jamestown has worked to make that center of downtown a cultural community. However, uh, with COVID, it's been very difficult to see what we can do now and in the future. The city though, through the City Council and the mayor's budget, does have money that can support initiatives through the DRI funding and other funds that have been made available. It is, uh, as Alyssa said, important that we look at our local artists and give them an opportunity to perform and to show their art in our community. And I think more of the street parties, they have been successful in downtown Jamestown. We close off a portion of Third Street and we can have art. We can have activities that would draw people downtown. We have Infinity, which is a terrific group of young artists who want to be able to find venues to perform and downtown is a great place for that. So I believe that we can enhance and improve that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cardinelli.
I will absolutely agree with Alyssa. Alyssa, this question was made for you. I'm so jealous. Absolutely agree with Alyssa and I absolutely agree with Ellen, but I would, I'd like to pose the bigger question of what is art? When you say art, what do we mean by art? Art is so subjective. Yes, you have your artists that can decorate our town and make it beautiful and our musicians and our talented Infinity groups. And we have so many endeavors that are in the arts in a sense of performance and making things pretty and, and revitalizing. We can absolutely do that, but you know what? I think working with your hands is art too. And I think trade jobs are art and I think specialized, uh, humanitarian efforts are art. And it, so all in all, yes, we can revitalize and we can absolutely encourage music and decoration and downtown celebration, but we can also encourage people to take a different path and be an artist as in a trade job. That's not easy. That is such, such a rare thing to be able to accomplish, to do something with your hands or, or to fix something or to have a specialized field. You truly are an artist if you're an electrician, because if you're not an artist, you're going to have a hard time. You're going to set something on fire.
Thank you very much.
I would like to encourage all of it.
Thank you. Our next question. Uh, what new initiatives would you propose the city do to address climate change and what can be done to encourage residents to act on their own? We'll begin with Ms. DeTanto.
Thank you. Um, as a member of the zoning board, I can tell you that we need to have solar coding in our zoning code. Uh, we, we should have places where residents and businesses can look at solar arrays and solar panels on their homes. Uh, we want to make sure that it's done tastefully. Uh, we need to do this in order to have some kind of, um, backup for our current electrical systems. Um, we have moved, as you know, to natural gas with our BPU, which is our municipal authority. We need to have more, uh, backups for that and they are looking at a solar array. I believe that we need to do this again in a way that's convenient and important for our residents, that we don't have solar arrays that are, uh, on the front lawns, uh, that we have things that we can work with uh, in our zoning code. But I do believe that climate change has to be addressed and that's one way. Another way is to look at hybrid vehicles as we, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Cardinelli.
I'm going to keep going on my tangent about artists because this is directly related. If you involve a trade job like electricians, um, like the people that work on the solar panels, uh, the wind power workers, if you can find construction projects that incorporate trade jobs like the IBEW, for example, you are establishing such great pay for the workers. You are establishing, um, a wonderful opportunity for them to have consecutive work. So the more projects that Jamestown can pick up in terms of solar power, in terms of wind power, in terms of then facilitating all the necessary components like electricians, like IEBW components like that, the more that we can incorporate as a city to focus on those type of efforts. We will move in a, a good direction in terms of climate change, but we will also be invigorating our trade jobs and our workers and creating more work. So the more we can do in terms of green energy and green energy efforts, that's great because I, I can, I'm very concerned about climate change. But also it's multi-beneficial because we can also embrace our workers and create more jobs.
Thank you. Ms. Porter.
I agree. Uh, with, with everything that has been said so far. And I would like to lean into looking at again our, our zoning codes and other ordinances that are outdated that create barriers for us to be able to actually implement these initiatives. I think that is the, one of the first things that we need to be considering is how are we getting in our own way here? We need to be able to attract those businesses that will employ those tradespeople. That is very important. It also creates a personal investment and pride in our community when we are the people doing that work. Um, my dad was a, was, is, he hasn't retired yet, is a tradesman. And there is nothing that compares to seeing the, the pride when he completes a project. And I think that we need to carry that into how we're educating our community and how we're educating our young people about the impact of our daily decisions, uh, when it comes to waste and reduction. And how can we lean into our regional agriculture as a, um, a resource for green alternatives?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll now go to another question. Uh, if someone came to you with a proposal to build a new public infrastructure, road, bridge, et cetera, in Jamestown, how would you evaluate whether that project was worth implement, implementing? And with that, what environmental impact would be a concern for you? Uh, we'll begin with Ms. Cardinelli.
I think first and foremost, I would want to establish what is the need for the city of Jamestown? Why are you proposing an infrastructure update of, uh, a rotor, a bridge or whatever it is? Um, I would definitely weigh the benefits of improving quality of life with the cost. Do we have the cost to actually, um, pursue this type of endeavor? Or is this going to be something that isn't even feasible right now currently? Um, and also too, if it is something like a road or a bridge, that, that's construction and I would absolutely want to consult with anyone that lives in that area and possibly even the entire city. Because not everyone wants a bunch of land cleared out and to build a new road and to build a new bridge. You have to actually have that communication. And that goes back to what I was talking about when the communication leaves a lot to be desired. As of right now, I think our City Council would clear out an entire land and, or an entire forest and, and give us a road. Maybe not everyone wants that. I think communication is very important. Um, obviously unfortunately, cost is also very important. It's very hard to factor in new projects. And most importantly, um, what is this going to be doing to our city and what is this going to be doing to our people? And what is this going to do for quality of life?
Thank you. Um, Ms. Porter.
Yeah, I'd start very similarly and want to understand what is the need? What is the, uh, what are we serving with this project? What challenge are we addressing? Are we really looking at broader goals that could bring us closer to things like climate change initiatives that actually, uh, address those, uh, goals to reduce our impact? Are we looking at things like becoming a more bike-friendly city with that project? If that's the case, then I want to look at more of like, what is the cost going to be? Do we have the funds to be able to support it? What is the impact going to be on, um, the resources in that immediate area? Uh, there's a number of studies that we would have to do in order to even consider a project of that magnitude. And I think it's very important that when these projects are brought forward, that we're also communicating that timeline with residents.
Thank you. Ms. DeTanto.
I think both Alyssa and Christina have said it, there, there has to be cost benefit analysis done on any type of infrastructure project. And that cost benefit has to be over the long term. If there is a new project, a new road, is that going to mean that new plots are going to be purchased for homes to be built? Or is there going to be infrastructure improvements like broadband and fiber? Infrastructure is much more than roads and bridges today. And fiber development is one big piece of infrastructure that we need to look at. Certainly there's a cost benefit there. But as we look at projects like this, the city of Jamestown is not in a vacuum. Partnerships are going to be critically important. We cannot undertake huge bridge projects or road projects without either partnering with New York State or with Chautauqua County. And that I think is critically important as we look at any project going forward that involves major infrastructure.
Thank you very much. Our next question. We have a high rate of poverty in our area alongside areas of, in, uh, affluence. Uh, what would be your plan for addressing income inequity? We'll begin with Ms. Porter.
So I think this comes back to job creation and allowing and supporting initiatives that increase the number of skilled laborers that we have in our city. The trades are typically highly paid, especially when unionized. And that is an area that is often undersold and undervalued. It is important that we also work with our community to address some of the underlying factors for poverty. I think this comes back to, uh, the question near the beginning regarding racism. How are we bridging those gaps and understanding each other as human beings first? How are we addressing mental health concerns? One of my concerns with the proposal for the American Rescue Plan money is that there isn't enough funding to proactively address mental health concerns. And that can lead to a very cyclical effect of poverty and contribute to that, um, that cycle that people often find themselves in. I, I feel like I'm probably close to my time, but also supporting initiatives like the public market. I had a feeling. There might have been a tech challenge there.
Ms. DeTanto.
Thank you. I think academic development is critical here for us to address any kind of inequity. But prior to that, we need to look at education, our educational systems, our mental health systems, our public health systems overall. And I do believe that, um, in education, we are lucky in Jamestown. We do have some very good schools. And we work in the workforce development area at Jamestown Community College where we know we need to train or retrain current residents so that they can have a workable job, a job that's available in Jamestown and they can get a rate of pay that will allow them to be out of the poverty area. We have 30% of our people are in poverty. That's mostly our single parents. So we need to work with that particular group so that we can raise the limit, raise, I'm sorry, raise their wages so that they can get out of poverty.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cardinelli.
Thank you very much for this question. Um, poverty is so complex because there are so many different factors that you have to consider when it comes to poverty. Like it costs money to be poor. Let's be real. If you need a job, it costs money for you to get to that job. If you are struggling so bad that you don't have a suit and you don't have transportation and you, you can't get to that job interview, it is going to cost you more money to try to get to that job interview and get a job than it would be to not go to this job interview. So there, like I said, it's multifaceted. Public transportation is a huge one. Some type of cheaper system where people can get from point A to point B to assist them, so it's not quite so costly. Broadband is another issue for, when you have children who need to remote learn or your mom and dad need to remote learn. If everyone doesn't have broadband, they can't do their job. That's another infrastructure update that we absolutely need to discuss. And it, it needs to be, uh, more consistent within the city of Jamestown. And finally, I would say, we, we got to support better housing initiatives. Um, that's another thing. I think Alyssa mentioned it and she said that there, there wasn't any funding toward, um, mental health. We also don't have much funding toward housing initiatives. I think that would truly help. It would be a start.
Thank you very much. Uh, next question. Given the current pervasive political division in this country, how realistically speaking, will you be able to assess different points of view and how would you compromise? Uh, we'll begin with Ms. DeTanto.
Thank you. Um, I am a, as everyone is, I think fearful of the divisiveness that we see in our country and in our politics. But in the local area, I can tell you that there is, has been a record of collaboration and cooperation across the parties. Um, the politics is you have to run on a certain line in order to be elected. And then my hope is the governing is different, that you're working together as a group. There will be nine people on the City Council who need to have the city's best interests at heart. And I think they need to work together. I have seen that in the past regardless of party. Um, and I would hope that we would see that in the future. So as I look at this, there's two divisions here, the politics of getting elected and then the good governing that should come after.
Thank you. Ms. Cardinelli.
I think I'm going to circle back to my original statement when I talked about being a restaurant worker because it's all coming together. When you work in a restaurant, a lot of times you don't like each other. And you know what? If you don't work together and you don't have a common goal and you don't have each other's back, the kitchen sinks and you don't do your job correctly and everyone leaves angry. I know what it's like to work with people that you don't personally care for. I know what it's like to work with people that maybe you argue a few times and then you get over it and then you go have a beer together, right? Because it's all about teamwork. If you cannot find common ground and you cannot work together despite your differences, then you should not be a part of this team. Me personally, I have no issue working with anyone whatsoever. I'm sure that we can find common ground. I'm sure that we can settle our differences because really, it's not about me. It's not about City Council. It's not about how I feel. It's not about my personal feelings. It's about serving the people of Jamestown.
Thank you very much. Our next question. What is your plan to answer that one?
That's okay. Thank you. No, I, I am really excited to answer this one as well. Um, you know, in any conversation, it's important to me that I'm viewing the other person as a human being first. That that person is bringing their own history, their own priorities into the conversation. And I have an opportunity to care for and love that person and learn from that person. And that will allow me, I believe, to make decisions that are in the best interests of everyone in our city. While I may not always agree with that, with whoever that person is, I think that I like to believe that everyone has the best intentions and that if there is divisiveness, is, if there is negativity, that there are very real reasons that are leading to that that need to be addressed.
Thank you. My apologies for. Thank you. My apologies for cutting you out of that answer. I didn't mean to. Our next question is, what is your plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Jamestown? We'll begin with Ms. Cardinelli.
Oh, apologize. My computer was working there. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions, I honestly, I think that is above city council's role for the city of Jamestown. I think that there are initiatives that we can take on. But if you're, if you're gonna talk about regulation, there are so many state laws that you have to actually follow and none of those can be set by Jamestown City Council. I think that if we're gonna stop, have the conversation about reducing the emissions, that would have to be a serious collaboration of your Jamestown City Council members, your state assembly person, and possibly your state senator.
Thank you. Ms. Porter.
You know, I have to agree. I think that, you know, a lot of that regulatory work does happen above the local government level. However, I believe that we have a position to play when it comes to being able to make that information accessible. I come back to my background in education and wanting to be able to, if there are regulations that need to be followed, they need to be understood and be accessible for our community members, whether those are business owners, residents, other people here in the city. And I think that's, that's a role that the city can play. And whether that's looking at, again, translation services, being able to hold, not necessarily town halls, but discussion circles and those types of things where we can come up with some community solutions that are based in those regulations that we have to follow. I also think it's helpful to look at, do an audit of what is our current impact and are there additional steps that we can be taking as a city?
Thank you. Ms. DiTanto.
Well, I agree that the regulations are above the city council level. I think when we look at purchases by the city, of which the city council does play a large role in budgeting, we can look at vehicles that are hybrid, that are electric as we move forward. And we have a municipal authority, the Board of Public Utilities, which we are responsible for. And the Board of Public Utilities has been working toward trying to reduce greenhouse emissions, but we can help them as we move forward. Members of the city council also serve, some of them anyway, on that Board of Public Utilities board and certainly would have an impact on what can be done in their budget to help reduce this. I also love the part about community gardens that the city has been involved in. And again, growing gardens and doing that kind of work does also help us in the greenhouse emissions reduction.
Thank you very much.
May I look to add in another comment or no?
A rebuttal, but not extend your reply.
Okay. I guess that it's not really a rebuttal to Ms. DiTanto, so thank you.
You can include it somewhere else, but...
Okay.
Can't give you more time unless I, never mind. Our next question. Are you concerned that downtown development projects have slowed down? And we will begin with Ms. Porter.
You know, I, I think it's reasonable that downtown development projects have slowed down. I think that the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic was something we could never anticipate. And it continues to have impact today when we see things like the supply chain issues and all of those types of things. I think that we have also welcomed some wonderful new small businesses downtown, even in the past year, who have started in more temporary locations and moved into shops right near the public market that happens every Saturday through the end of this month. And I think those are initiatives that we can continue to lean into. We also saw the return of some beloved events and traditions that are also continuing to help with downtown revitalization. I think that we need to continue to support downtown revitalization, but it also can't be our only focus. We have many neighborhoods outside of downtown that also need to see some of that revitalization that downtown is seeing as well.
Thank you. Ms. DiTanto.
I think Alyssa is right. We've seen a stoppage of development because of COVID-19. However, that doesn't mean that in the background, things are not happening. We have heard, and I understand, there are small businesses that either have moved in or are planning to move in this year. We also have to focus our development department on reaching out to the greater neighborhoods. As Alyssa stated, there are many cottage industries that can be put into Jamestown in homes because they don't need to have big trucks coming or anything. They can work from home. They are internet-based. We have seen an increase in houses being sold in Jamestown to people from out of town who can work remotely. And I think that that's going to increase development all over the city. So while I hope that downtown will continue to see new development, I also think it's greater than just downtown, and we need to focus on that with our development department.
Thank you. Ms. Cardinelli.
Thank you. Personally, I think some of the revitalization that has gone on downtown is fantastic. Comedy Center, fantastic. Reg Lene, fantastic. There are so many different efforts that we've made for tourism and to entertain. I think they're great, but you have to consider, there's a lot of nonprofits. Downtown and nonprofits do not pay taxes, and not paying taxes does not help the city of Jamestown. So when it comes to downtown revitalization, I'm very cognizant of what is going downtown and what are we expanding on and what are we nourishing? And I think going on what Alyssa and Ellen had both said, the majority of our effort right now, and I guess I'm gonna have to say this a little bit more forcefully, the majority of our effort should be going to revitalizing neighborhoods without gentrifying because that's very, very important. I do not want to gentrify neighborhoods whatsoever. And we should be fortifying our neighborhoods. We have families that have lived in Jamestown for generation after generation, and they trip on their sidewalk and their street is messed up. And we're not nourishing our residents the way that we need to be, the way that we nourish downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This will be our last question before closing. And the question is, is there any specific concern that is unique to Jamestown? And if so, what is the concern and how would you address it? We'll begin with Ms. DiTanto.
I highly doubt there's a unique one. Any city, town, village, state, and the country have very similar issues. But in Jamestown, we have an old housing stock. We have 60% of our houses are between 75 and 100 years old or older. In order for us to be able to preserve neighborhoods, as Christina said, and to improve our housing stock, we need neighborhood revitalization programs. We have been fortunate that there have been some in small groups in some neighborhoods. Forest Heights is one where they've had some neighborhood revitalization. The Renaissance Corporation has helped with some funding in the past. But I would say it's not a unique concern, but it is a very, very challenging one for us as we look at ways to improve and increase our tax base. Neighborhoods are vital to that.
Thank you. Ms. Cardinelli.
Thank you. I'm not saying this to offend anyone. I would never dream of doing that. But I think a unique demographic to the city of Jameson, Jameson is 86% white. And when you look at culturally competent conversations, I think there's a lot of education that needs to be addressed. This is kind of on the same vein of everything that we have said tonight already. We have to embrace our cultures and we need to embrace our residents and have maybe some uncomfortable conversations. Because when you have a population that is 86% white, it is very hard to discuss systemic racism. It's very hard to discuss that some of our neighborhoods that need to be revitalized were in fact redlined at one point in the 60s. It's very hard to discuss anything that is a perspective outside of your own when it's an 86% white demographic and they don't know what it feels like for someone to treat them differently because of the color of their skin.
Thank you. Ms. Porter.
I'll also say, I don't believe that there is an issue that is specifically unique to Jamestown. You travel across the country, you're going to find a city or another entity that has issues similar to us. What I'll say makes us unique is our people and our community. I think that our community is our strongest asset and it is where we can find our most innovative solutions to our challenges and our opportunities for growth and to be able to attract new community members, support those who are in our neighborhoods right now through revitalization programs like Ellen DiTanto is talking about and Christina Cardinelli in conversations around race and other challenges that we face. I think that we have to lean into what makes us unique as a strength and instead of a deficit.
Thank you very much. We will now allow one minute for a concluding statement, and we will begin with Ms. Porter.
I will keep this as brief as possible. I just want to thank everyone for their time tonight and the League of Women Voters for hosting us. As a city council member, I want to recommit to my promise to put community first in my work as a public servant if I'm elected. It is critically important to me that I listen to and work with the residents of Jamestown and continue to have an ever-evolving vision for our city that is influenced and impacted by the voices of our community. I summarize this work into three main areas of increasing access to resources and services, maintaining safe and sustainable infrastructure, and enhancing quality of life for our neighbors. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that this evening.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cardinelli.
Thank you so much. I was going to talk about this in my opening statement, and I got cut off. So I think that this is a good time to mention this. I mentioned the restaurant work for a reason. It's because I can be of service and I know what it's like to be of service and to assist others because I made an entire career out of it. But most importantly, I want to run for office because giving, given that experience of being a restaurant worker, I know what it's like to be poor. I know what it's like to go to bed hungry. I know what it's like to wish there was a bus that I could take or wish that I could get to that job interview on time. I know what it's like to struggle not having great internet connection. I know that I was on food stamps when I was 22 years old because of the situation I was in with restaurants. I didn't make enough money. If you're going to serve, there's the best thing that you can serve them with is empathy. So yes, I have professional career skills and I have sales skills and I have budget skills. But really, when it comes down to it, I'm going to listen to everyone in the city of Jamestown. Like, they are a human being that matters because I think that's what people need in a representative.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. DiTanto.
Thank you to you, Marsha Marins, and to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. We've heard a lot of enthusiasm and hope in this forum tonight. And I believe that as a candidate, I can represent the city of Jamestown with leadership, experience, and new perspectives. We must be willing to think and govern differently if we are going to survive and thrive in the city of Jamestown. We must reach out to the public and to our private partners. And we must demand a seat at the table with our county development agency because we must be willing to think in new and different ways. The city of Jamestown has been in economic decline for a long time. We now have one phenomenal opportunity to turn that around because we have $28 million from the federal government to do that. I am proven to be a collaborator. I can build trust among diverse partners. I can help develop solutions on issues and challenges. Together, we can build a better Jamestown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the candidates. It was a wonderful debate. I want to thank you for your participation tonight and for your willingness to run for office because I think that's, it takes a lot of courage and strength, and I appreciate that. And I wish you, the three of you, good luck. Voting is an essential process of democracy. And in exercising a choice for elective office, we affirm our faith in that process. So I want to remind viewers to participate in government. Exercise your right to vote on November 2nd. The polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Early voting will take place October 23rd through October 31st at the Board of Elections Office, the Japsen Center, Chautauqua Mall, and the Chautauqua County Fairgrounds. The hours vary, so check online, but I hope to see some of you at one of these sites. A special thank you to the voter services team that make this possible. Mary and Jack Croxton are beleaguered timekeepers. Lisa Mertz, Pat Correll, and Tina Rousa. Thank you all very much and good night.